This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have everyone have a seat. We can start now. Good evening, my name is Stacy Yarborough, and I am your town clerk and tax collector for the Town of North Haven. And at this time, I'd like to call the annual Budget Town Meeting to order. This meeting is brought pursuant to Chapter 7, Section 706 of the North Haven Town Charter. I always like to give a little history of a budget because I think it's helpful. You might wonder how we create a budget for the town. So, each year, in approximately November or December, each Town Department Head and members of the Board of Education are asked to submit a tentative budget for their respective departments for the upcoming fiscal year and to present that information to the Board of Finance. In the new year, each department head is then required to defend their budget before the Board of Finance. It's called a "Budget Workshop." The Board of Finance then takes all the information that they've accumulated from each department and the Board of Ed and creates a tentative budget. And with that, a tentative mill rate to make said budget a reasonable reality. Now, the tentative budget was presented to the town at our recent public hearing in April. The next step is tonight's Annual Budget Town Meeting. And that's followed by a Budget Referendum, which occurs next Tuesday, May 15, 2018. When a budget is passed, the final step is for the Board of Finance to meet and set the mill rate for the new fiscal year. Now, before we go any further, the first order of business in a town meeting is to elect a meeting moderator. And that's pursuant to Town Charter. The requirements for a meeting moderator are that the moderator must have been a registered voter in the town as of the last election. And only those citizens registered to vote in North Haven and citizens of the United States 18 years of age or more who pay taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list may vote. Lastly, when we're voting tonight, we're going to vote on a few things, not everything. But the first vote's going to be for the moderator. And anyone here who votes, you do have to be an elector. If you're not sure if you're eligible to vote, I do have the voter registry list up here and you can check with me. Now, the floor is open for nominations for meeting moderator. Are there any nominations? There is a nomination from Attorney John Lambert. Is there a second? Are there any further nominations for meeting moderator? Hearing none, I now put this to a vote. All in favor of John Lambert as the meeting moderator signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. The vote for moderator passes. I declare John Lambert moderator of this meeting.
Good evening, welcome. The subject matter of tonight's meeting is the budget. And so, this is the time for anyone to speak on the budget even though there will be no vote taken since the selectmen have already called for a referendum for next Tuesday. Does anyone wish to speak? I'm going to ask the moderator to read the call, excuse me.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, we have to do a few procedural things first. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Chapter 7, Section 706 of the North Haven Town Charter that the annual Budget Town Meeting of the electors as citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the Town of North Haven, Connecticut will be held in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, on Monday, May 7, 2018 at 7:00 PM. This budget meeting will conduct the following business. Number one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Two, to establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes. And, three, pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn said meeting at its conclusion and to submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 to a vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May 15, 2018. Including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referenda pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 7-9B, that voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 AM through 8:00 PM at the following North Haven polling place. All districts will vote at Mildred-Wakely Rec. Center on 7 Linsley Street. The aforementioned recommendations will be placed on paper ballots as the following question. Shall the Town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $53,528,36,000 for the Board of Education and $45,864,552,000 for the Town Government for a total amount of $98,917,388,000 for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019? Voters approving said question will vote yes. And those opposing said question will vote no. Applications for absentee ballots are available in the Town Clerk's Office at 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut. If you have any questions, you can call me, the Town Clerk, at (203) 239-5321, Extension 630.
Thank you. As noted by the Town Clerk in pursuant to Section, General Statute 7-7, in accordance with the action taken by the Board of Finance, this town meeting will adjourn at its conclusion and submit the question concerning the adoption of the budget discussed tonight for fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 to a vote by paper ballot. This vote will occur on Tuesday, May 15, 2018 between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at one centralized polling place located at the Mildred-Wakely Recreation Center located at 7 Linsley Street, North Haven. Please be advised, no other business can be conducted during the course of tonight's meeting. The Town Clerk will now read the first and third items on the agenda for discussion only at this meeting.
Again, the following two items are tonight for discussion only. Number one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And number three, pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn said meeting at its conclusion and submit the question concerning the adoption of the budget for fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018 to a vote by paper ballot on next Tuesday, May 15, 2018. Including the establishment of hours of voting at referenda pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 7-9B, that voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the following North Haven polling place only for all districts, that is, Mildred-Wakely Recreation Center on 7 Linsley Street. And again, the following question shall be placed on the paper ballot. Shall the Town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $53,528,36,000 for the Board of Education and $45,864,552,000 for the Town Government for the total amount of $98,917,388,000 for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019?
Now, after being ahead of myself, I will open up the floor for the discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on the question? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, would you please just state your name and address for the record?
I'm Fritz Bicker, 290 Spring Road. I must say that even after looking at that figure on a piece of paper for months, I find the young lady's recitation of this figure, $98 million, to be breathtaking and staggering. This is a sum that used to be relegated to the budgets of states, not towns. But we have more and even huger figures to consider. We come in this town to a fork in the road. We can either choose the path of our poor sisters Hampden and New Haven and end up awash in red ink and unfunded retirement obligations till the end of the next century. Or we can draw a lesson from their failure and malfeasance and come to a new understanding of our role in terms of our responsibility as financial planners in this town. The people in Hampden, if you're unfamiliar with the situation, were given to excess spending sprees over the last 50 years that did not correspond with their ability to actually fund these sprees. So, while they were very happy to give in to the labor unions with vast expenditures in salaries and pensions and medical costs, et cetera, they knew that they would be... we would be unhappy with actually paying for all these things, so they put that off. And they put it off till next year. And the next year, they put it off. The year after that, until 40 or so years later, here they are on the verge of insolvency, something that normally, in my vernacular, we would call bankruptcy. This is true for almost half of the towns in this state. By the time you hear me next year, if that ever happened, there will be more, not less. This is compounded by the fact that we have an equally or greater spending spree going on since 1963 in the city of Hartford. Our latest governor, Mr. Malloy, now finds himself awash in a sea of red ink totaling $76 billion, that's with a "B," dollars. There is no financial analyst arrogant enough to even take a stab at the question of how they're going to pay for this. Therefore, let our talk in the future about MERSA and hiring incentives, et cetera, from the state be ameliorated by the fact that these guys have no money. Mrs. Deloro and Mr. Andrews can pull a rabbit out of a hat once in a while, but the general trend will be nothing from Hartford unless it's funded by something from the federal government, which will probably not happen as long as Republicans in the White House and a Democrat is in Hartford. Now, when that changes, keep in mind of the following scenario. The federal government, as of January, I guess, is now by its own estimate $21 trillion, that's with a "T", $21 trillion in the hole. That's a quarter million for every woman, man, and family dog in the United States. But the bad news doesn't stop there. According to Forbes Magazine and roughly 300 non-Keynesian economists in the country, the unfunded obligations of the federal government, including our Social Security and Medicaid and Medicare and all the thousands of giveaway programs we have in this country since the '60s, total, get this, $128 trillion, that's with a "T," dollars. Now, don't think of that because I tried to the other night and I'm still on the excedrin. It's not a number. It's the definition of a catastrophe. Why I'm belaboring the point of the federal deficit and the state deficit, et cetera, is because water runs downhill. We, despite the comparatively excellent fiduciary experts we have in the executive branch of this town, we have to deal with this fact that we, at the end of this decade, may be the only people in the state with cash in our pockets. We're not going to be bailed out by New Haven. We're not going to be bailed out by Hartford. So, it's us, being the adults in this room full of 169 towns that we have in the state of Connecticut. In being adults, we have to look at the gigantic mistakes that the children around us have made. Making gigantic, grandiose promises based on their childhood experience of the '60s, when every single person was employed and every teacher made $3 an hour, everybody was happy. This is no longer the case. When we enter into labor agreements, when we enter into bonding agreements, when we enter into any agreement that involves taking money out of my pocket, we have to look at this in an entirely different way. It's not whether these programs are deserving of our support. It's whether we have the wherewithal to support them. My friends on the Board of Education went back to their drawing board and cut a little bit off their budget for which I commend them because I know that is counter to their every instinct. However, I must say that with two new schools, you guys have accumulated a lot of pencils. I encourage you therefore to sharpen every single one and come back with a budget that involves no increases whatsoever. To me, this is a gigantic compromise because if I had my way, I would roll everything back to the budget of 1996. So, I think I'm being a big sport allowing you to just freeze it. The expectation would be that the other people in the government would learn from your example and cut their budgets also. I stole this idea from a former president of the United States named James Earl Carter, who had a real lot of bad ideas, but among them, one good one at least, called the zero-sum budget, with which some of our people in government familiar with the private sector like Mr. Frida will be familiar. The zero-sum budget is predicated on the exact antithesis of how budgets are done in government now. It starts out, as you may expect, with zero. Everybody adds to it based not on precedent, but on present need. It takes a great deal more time and thought and effort and therefore is not done. But what you end up with in the final analysis is a budget that is smaller and perhaps even understandable to the unwashed masses like myself. I encourage them to adopt that as Phase 1. Phase 2 would be something that I like to call the zero-growth budget, which means that we mandate as citizens that the government not take any more of our money. $98 million sounds like we're being generous, doesn't it? Now, I have noticed that the last couple of times I've met people from the town, they have been in wholehearted agreement with what I said at the last meeting. I don't fool myself into thinking that that is a majority, but it is a significant percentage. I would say that this idea has fairly broad support. Therefore, I urge you to consider this proposal. We don't need to pay more. And if we did pay more, it must be done with the assumption that we are the only ones paying. The state is not going to play a large role in the financing of this town. Nobody from any other place except from those of us who are sitting here and those of us who are hopefully going to participate in the referendum are going to have any part in our building a budget for ourselves in this town. Therefore, if you don't want to pay $99 million or $102 million the next time we meet here, perhaps we should just cut it short here. It's a simple idea. Just stop spending. Stop the madness. Zero-growth budget. Otherwise known as the freeze. Thank you very much and may God bless your deliberations.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mrs. White, come forward.
Mary White Summerling. I first have to start by saying a big thank you to all our first responders for a job well done every day and particularly with the Quinnipiac Avenue tragedy. I'd like to continue by saying unfortunately, we can't freeze and stay still because things are happening which require attention. For example, the fire chief reported at the last Fire Commission meeting on April 24th that there were 85 more alarms than this time last year. And since they had last met, there were 340 calls for service. And that represented 64% of those calls were for emergency medical service, advanced life support. And 76 calls were overlapping or simultaneous emergencies where the one fireman/paramedic on duty was out on the first 911 emergency call. Those 76 people did not receive a paramedic. Instead, AMR eventually arrived with two EMTs. Our first responders save lives and property. They put themselves in danger for us. They put their lives on the line. The firefighters were able to prevent that Quinnipiac fire from spreading to neighbors' homes despite the fact that the barn had burned ferociously for many, many hours. Don't you think we need to begin to provide what the fire chief says our first responders need? Now, more than ever, it is important to add the $110,000 to the $140,000 in that budget line item and use that $250,000 to underwrite the hiring of two firefighter/paramedics. The Quinnipiac fire stressed our old apparatus. It makes sense and it would be important to add the lease-to-purchase payment to replace at least one of the old fire trucks. Gratitude, accolades, and prayers for our first responders are all very nice. Our first responders appreciate the kind words. But they would appreciate it more if we would provide for their needs so they can be safe. So they can safely do their job. And so that they can save lives and property. I ask people here to step up to the microphone and say, "You support underwriting the two firefighter/paramedics and you support adding the lease-to-purchase payment to replace at least one of the old fire trucks." Again, firefighters save our lives. We have to make sure that we provide them with what they need so that they can save our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Al Lindblum and I live at 511 Elm Street Extension in North Haven. I have 38 years of emergency service experience having retired from a local police department. And I also worked 18 years for AMR. I retired from AMR two years ago. I have not been contacted by them about speaking at this meeting and I don't represent AMR. I'm speaking as a resident and taxpayer. I truly believe people making remarks regarding putting more money in the fire department for medical personnel have the needs of the town in their heart. However, they don't have all the information. About 15 years ago, AMR held both the paramedic license for the town and the transport license. AMR billed patients directly for services provided and this did not cost the town a dime. The Fire Department Administration made the decision to petition the state to remove the paramedic license from AMR and give it to the North Haven Fire Department. After the paramedic license was assigned to the North Haven Fire Department, AMR was no longer legally obligated to provide paramedic service to the town going forward. AMR does respond to every call in North Haven because AMR holds the state-issued PSA for medical transports in the town. AMR does not have to provide a paramedic on transport ambulances in North Haven, but they do so routinely. There was an incident last August involving a cardiac arrest call. A lot of erroneous information went out on social media and the local media that it took AMR 20 minutes to respond. That was later proven to be false. AMR was on scene in a little over seven minutes and also provided a paramedic. At the time, the Fire Department had all their assets at a house fire on Quinnipiac Avenue, which AMR also had two ambulances standing by for firefighters. AMR was handling an additional three more medical emergencies in the town. The cardiac arrest call was the fifth call for service at the time. AMR proved by the vehicle locating system in the ambulance that they arrived when they said they did. And additionally, the police officer's body camera showed him, showed the ambulance crew on scene. AMR does a lot for North Haven. They provide free coverage for fire incidents, standbys for concerts on the green, and also do, which a lot of people don't know, the town's 911 medical call pre-arrival instructions. This is all free to the town. Connecticut law states all towns must give pre-arrival instructions to anyone calling 911 for a medical emergency. And the person answering the call has to be trained. AMR does this for North Haven at no charge. So, if the Fire Department were to take the transport license and put it out to bid, this is something that could go away. Not only will it go away, but it also means that our dispatch center in the town would have to double in size because you have to have trained people now answering medical calls. Whereas they just transfer the call to AMR for AMR to handle it. In 2010, the Fire Department made a presentation to the town for a safer grant to increase manpower by four paramedics, which costs approximately $400,000 a year currently. At the town meeting, we were told there would be two paramedics per shift and overtime would drop. The second medic is on the shift but is assigned to either a fire engine or ladder truck. And he has no paramedic equipment or paramedic heart medications and cannot act as a medic. When I asked why, I was told because if he has to assist AMR with a transport, the fire engine would be a man short and may have to respond to the hospital to pick up the fire paramedic. And that could keep the paid engine company out of service for possibly an hour per shift. an hour per incident. Overtime in the fire department has gone up yearly, and if you take the current budget number for this year and divide that by 32, the number of paid firefighters, that averages to $24,000 per man, just in overtime. Now our fire chief is requesting another safer grant for an additional eight men this current year and eight more next year, which eventually will cost the town approximately $2 million per year in additional payroll and benefits after the grant expires. The net gain to the town would be one more paramedic. And we would also have to buy a new fire truck, so that this medic could ride in it with three other new paid firemen. So again, when this medic assists at a hospital, we would be sending a fire truck worth approximately $700,000 to downtown New Haven to pick up the fire paramedic, to bring him back to the town. In my opinion, the fire department is beating its equipment to death responding to medical calls. The chief already said Engine 1 has a life expectancy of five to seven years before they look for a replacement because of the amount of use that it gets, and the safer grant he wants is completely inappropriate for the town's medical response needs. If we added the second paramedic in the fire department, what happens when the town experiences a third or fourth call? The fire department will never, ever have enough medics to handle the call volume in this town. There are other avenues the fire department needs to look at. Number one, like the police department, adjust your manpower hours for peak demand. The fire department runs eight men, eight men per shift, 24 hours a day. The police department concentrates on the day shift and evening shifts, where you have a high volume of calls, and the midnight shift is lighter. Private ambulance companies adjust their manpower staffing? It just doesn't make sense. If the majority of medical calls occur Monday through Friday during business hours due to the Yale complex and doctor's offices being open, they need to adjust their hours. And another option, which I feel needs to be looked at, is the town fire department getting out of the EMS service completely and becoming firemen again. Let's contract out the paramedic and EMS service to a local provider, and we can dictate paramedic responses and responses by the ambulance within so many minutes, just like Orange and Woodbridge does. This will give the fire department two extra men to do with as they need, hopefully by reducing some of the overtime. Thank you.
Gentlemen here, was -- when you got up before, blue shirt?
Elliot Croll, 191 Clintonville Road. I looked at the budget analysis on Friday, the 27th, and I found a couple of things that I was a little bit interested in. It seems we have a couple of things that are in the higher brackets. We have one line item here that's going up 48%, and I'd like to get an explanation. And there's another item here that's going up 57%, and I think we need a couple of explanations on both of those.
Mr. Croll, I understand the questions. I don't know that I can force anyone to answer them, but we wrote for the record the questions asked.
That's all we can expect.
Thank you. Personnel policy expenses is highlighted and audit. Are the two highlighted ones. Would you like it?
I'm Ed Swankowski, the Director of Finance. The personnel policy line item is the line item that we use to put in the raises for contracts that haven't been settled. If a contract's in negotiations, rather than spread out the increase in various line items, it all goes into the personnel policy line item. And it's grown because of some unsettled contracts, and that's why it's gone up so much from last year. As far as the audit line goes, that was just, that money was used to, actually, that went down $20,000. That was because we reapplied that money elsewhere. Instead of doing, we haven't done internal audits in two or three years, and one of the board members recommended that we reuse the money elsewhere in the budget, so that's why that has gone down.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak upon the budget at this time? All righty.
Here are the third item, which is to adjourn. We can discuss that, but we've already set the date for the referendum, so if there's nothing, the only thing is to discuss it, and then there's a motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the final item to be voted on this evening, I'd like the clerk to read that item. Number two is discussed, number one and three. Number two is an action item, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Number two, to establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statute. Be it resolved that upon approval of the town budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, and in accordance with Section 12-142 and Section 12-144 of the Connecticut General Statute, insofar as the adoption of the budget calls for the laying of a tax on property other than motor vehicles, the tax shall be due in two semi-annual installments on July 1, 2018, and January 1, 2019, respectively, and shall be payable without penalty by August 1, 2018, and February 1, 2019, respectively. And be it further resolved that insofar as such tax applies to motor vehicles, in accordance with Section 12-144A and payable, I'm sorry, 144A of the Connecticut General Statute, such tax shall be due in a single installment on July 1, 2018, and payable without penalty by August 1, 2018, and adds to supplementary taxes on motor vehicles as provided in Section 12-71B of the Connecticut General Statute. Such tax shall be due in a single installment on January 1, 2019, and payable without penalty by February 1, 2019. Is there a second for this item?
Is there any discussion on this item? It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of item number two as resolved, please say aye. Any opposed? When no, I declare the motion by voice vote as having passed. We're at the end of the meeting. As noted before, the vote will take place, the actual budget vote will take place, on Tuesday, May 15, 2018, one centralized place. Therefore, as there's no further business for the town meeting, I declare the meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be, as well as the results of the budget referendum, will be reported by the town clerk as soon as possible. Thank you all for attending.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.